Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council, last meeting now before Christmas and last meeting of the year. So, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Here.
Meringa.
Here.
Northhook.
Here.
Steenstra, Truist, Vanderwall.
Here.
And Mayor Mas.
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, council member JR Vanderwall will be giving the invocation. We're going to follow that with the pledge of allegiance. So for those of you who wish, I invite you to stand and then, like I said, we're going to follow with the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we're so grateful we get to assemble tonight in peace and freedom upon the holiday season coming forward. And we anticipate the season and we're so grateful for all that you've given us over this year. And we're so happy that we get to be here together tonight. Bless this meeting tonight. Bless the people that are living in this city, that serve this city, protect this city, and help us have great conversation this evening and help us have a wonderful holiday season ahead. And we do all these things in your name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, JR. Appreciate it. Just so I don't forget, we have two council members that are missing tonight. Both have been, have asked the excuse. So is there a motion to excuse Tim Steenstra this evening?
So moved.
Support.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. And also, Paul Truist has asked to be excused. Is there a motion to excuse Paul tonight?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Great. We also have before us the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. In the opposition, please say no. We have the minutes from the last meeting, which was only a week ago. So, Marcy, you got those done already?
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from last week's meeting, December 11?
So moved.
Support.
And support. Any discussions, additions, corrections? Anything anybody wants to point out in particular? And if not, all those in favor of approving those minutes, please say yes. Yes. In the opposition, please say no. Great. Okay. Presentation of bills. It's hard to believe that we've got $606,000 worth of bills in the last weekend, so tell us about it.
Well, there's a couple of big ones on there and we're going to kind of shake things up tonight with how we approve things, just because I want to stay in sequence as possible. But out of the $600,000 total, about 25% of that's general fund and the bulk of it, more than 50%, was in the water and sewer area. On page four, Franklin Hall Wurda, that was progress payment for the Clean Water Plant Aeration Project, $51,000. And on page five, there was $49,000 in water meter purchases, about 300 of them. I think council approved those some time back, which already tells me that they, you know, we get them when we get them. And so now we've delivered actual water meters and so the bill has come due. The biggest bill and the reason for going out of order a bit tonight is related to the 2024 property and liability insurance for the city. And our city clerk took proposals on those bids recently. And because we're at the end of the year, and this is the last, as the mayor said, last meeting of the year, but the invoice for that is actually on for tonight. But also on for tonight is to approve that bid. And so if it's okay with council and Mr. Mayor, if we can jump down to number two, on the manager's report where we have the listing for the property and liability insurance coverage for the year, I'd ask the city clerk to explain the bids that she received and a recommendation for council to approve a renewal with our current provider.
Okay. In October, the clerk's office started the process of updating our information with our current provider and then put out the proposal for request. We sent it to three carriers and two responded back. That was BHS Insurance and who, we had, we did, we were previously with BHS Insurance in 2022 and then we had switched over to MML/Metal Brook in 2022. We've been happy with both carriers, both provide great service. MML provided the lowest quote, which was about $15,000 lower than, $15,000, I'm sorry, $15,000 higher than it was last year. The quote from last year was $159 and the quote from this year was $175 from MML. And the increase is due to a few things. We added a lot in property values with our Clean Water Plant. We finished some projects up there. We increased the values on some of our buildings because those were, we'd found lower for the replacement cost. We added seven additional vehicles. We went from $59 in 2023 to $66 in '24. Our Michigan catastrophic claims assessment went from $86 per vehicle to $122 and that's just because we had so many claims this year. We had a $716,000 increase in total agreed amount values. And then we also increased our voting equipment by about $30,000. So we're recommending that you go with MML with the quote for $175. And then we'll also are eligible for a $3,000 dividend rebate, bringing that down to about $12,000 for our increase for the year. So it's within the budgeted amount. We had budgeted $173,000 and we'll come in at just under it at $172. We're sliding just in under the budget there.
Well, thanks for the memo. I mean, it took a lot of time and work, I'm sure, to pull it all together.
Yeah, and the department heads, too, for putting up with all of my questions. They're very good about answering all of the questions that I give them. It's a lot to go through every year and we go through each item and adjust each insurance item, every line by line. So we were very thorough this year.
Questions for Marcy on the memo or the proposal to award, enter into the contract for liability insurance with MML Metal Brook? Questions for Marcy?
Okay.
Just an observation, I guess, it's kind of split up over different funds, but I did notice that in the motor pool, it was like $83,000 of that for all of our vehicles. And I'm assuming also our new fire truck is a big chunk of that, too.
Yeah, I mean, this is a big bill, but it's all of our liability and all of our departments. It's all of our structures and properties. It's all of our vehicles. And it's, you know, what really, it's the same coverage that resulted in a payment back to the city after the fire truck was hit this year. So just like at your house, when you insure your vehicles in your home, it's pretty important.
Any other questions, comments for Marcy? Okay. If not, is there a motion to enter into contract with the Michigan Municipal League in the amount of $175,010 for liability insurance?
So moved.
Support.
And support. Any comments, questions, observations? Okay. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Meringa.
Yes.
Northhook.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Back to the bills.
So back to the bills. With that $175, that represents almost a third of the bills for this particular invoice list. And as Councilmember Meringa mentioned, they're split up very specifically by the funds that they're, the costs are attributed to. So they're on various pages throughout the invoice list, but that is the total. And I did not have anything else to point out, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
But we'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for Ken or Jane on any of the bills? Okay. If not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $606,336.05?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Final questions, comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Northhook.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Okay. Time for public comment. Anybody here tonight like to address the council? Please just come on up to the podium and give us your name, address, and tell us what you're thinking about tonight. Last chance of the year. Okay. Not everyone at once, please. No, all right. We'll move on then. Down to the consent agenda. Before we get into the consent agenda, you'll notice the last item on there is city council committee assignments. We had a packet of information even before last meeting. So we can go ahead and discuss those tonight. Or if you prefer, since we're missing two council members, we can hold that off. Planning Commission has a meeting before our next meeting, but they don't have anybody up for renewal right now. They do theirs in July. So I don't think any of them are super time sensitive. Is that right, Ken, Marcy?
Yes. I just want to make sure you, we have the boards and commissions under the manager's report and the council committee assignments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the consent agenda.
All right. Okay. So the city council committee assignments. I haven't heard that anybody is displeased. And so my proposal is that everybody stays on the same committee as last year. I see some nodding. Okay. All right. And we'll talk about the other one a little bit later. There you go. I saw committee assignments and, okay. So on the consent agenda, we have the November investment report, the planning commission minutes from December 6, and the DDA minutes from last week, December 14. Also, an appointment for me to the ITP board again. And a resolution renaming a portion of Division Avenue, that portion of Division that has no residences on it. And also, as I mentioned before, the city council committee assignments. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Anything anybody'd like to discuss in particular on those? Okay. Let's do a roll call vote on that anyway. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Northhook.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
Ken, back to the city manager's report.
Yeah. First item on there tonight is an authorization of the contract for design build services around the CWP Blower Project. It is a budgeted project and you've got information in your packet, two items actually there that Brian and Todd will go over with council tonight in the hopes of moving that project forward.
Brian and Todd, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody?
Good.
Okay. So tonight, here to present the blower project, so this is a continuation of the mixing aeration project that we authorized earlier in the year in order to hit some timelines around some summer construction and put that project into place when they could get after the tanks. It was a time-sensitive one and so it's going really well. They're staying on time, they're staying under budget. And this is the next phase of that, which is to basically replace some aging blowers at the plant with new blowers in order to maintain the process, especially around ammonia treatment during the cold weather months in the winter. So in order to do that, we are proposing to use the same team that's currently out there working and finishing up the other project due to the time-sensitive nature of trying to procure these blowers and the long lead time that they've got associated with them, as well as the necessity to get after some of the tankage during the summer when it's available from a process perspective. So that's what the general description of the project is. And what we'd like to do is authorize their award of contract to the Franklin Hall Wurda Company, their team on a design-build basis for a guaranteed maximum price. I've got it there in the letter at $4,783,600. So I'd be happy to answer it. I'm assuming we're taking this in two steps, Ken?
Yeah.
So is there any questions around the project or how we're proposing to go about it or anything?
I have a question about the project, but I got a question for Jane. So how are we going to pay for this?
Interesting, you should ask about that. So we have already met with Ottawa County and got their agreement to help us fund it. And we're also in contention for some grant money, which we are hoping will sort of rebuild the tanks once these salaries are spent. So we may have to talk about raising rates, but for right now, we have some net position that will help offset some of that cost and bringing in some of those grant dollars. We'll bring that down even further. So it's kind of what we're looking at. But we can't spend net position forever. So while we do have some cushion there, we would need to talk about raising revenue. I don't believe this is something we're going to need to bond for. After talking to Pat at Ottawa County, we are both kind of looking at using current resources and recovery with rate of jet.
What's the flow percentage, like 56% Ottawa County? Is that still a good number?
Okay. Questions for Brian or Todd about the project? So is there a motion to approve the award of the contract for the Granville CWP Aeration Blower Project to Franklin Hall Wurda in the best interest of the city in the amount of $4,783,600?
So moved.
It's not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
So moved on that.
Okay. There's support.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Northhook.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. And so the second part of it is to approve the total estimated budget, which is more than that. It's got some design engineering, material testing, and some inspection and construction engineering. So the total estimated budget would be $5,183,600. Is there a motion to approve that budget?
So moved.
Support.
And support. Other comments, questions? Okay. Marcy, would you call the roll for that, please?
Councilmember Meringa.
Yes.
Northhook.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Jumping down to number three, which is a project council's been discussing for some time. It is a budgeted project. It would involve some extensive refurbishment of portions of the fire station. I'll let the chief talk about the components of this, but we're looking at 2024 construction.
24-25.
24-25.
April through, well, fiscal '25, April through August. So thanks, council. Sorry for the last minute of getting the paperwork to you here. One of the key players, just when this started to come together, middle of last week, had a family emergency they had to deal with, so it set us back till late this afternoon. You'll recall, back in July, we had our consulting engineer that's helped us through this project here. You accepted his recommendation to accept the proposal from DCI Construction for the large part of the work to happen at the fire station. Right after that, I've been hooked up with one of Randy's colleagues. We brought in our insurance company and we've been trying to negotiate a final contract with the contractor and their legal counsel and insurance folks. That dragged on for quite a bit. Understandably, we're trying to protect ourselves against another disaster over there. They're trying to protect themselves against the reputation of our building. So that dragged on all through the summer and right up until the first of November. So you'll see that the contract has unfortunately increased by $74,000 since the bids that came in last spring. I broke that down for you, I think. Did you all get the memo put in front of you?
Yeah.
Okay. I kind of itemized that. You'll see that better than 50% of that is some bonds and insurance and protections that were built in to protect both parties throughout this. And the other 48%, 49% is just labor and materials increases. So I have a contract. We didn't copy that for you because this is it.
Thank you.
It's all legal speak and it's about a half inch thick, but Marcy's got that and can send it to any of you that want to review it. And I guess tonight the ask is, we authorize this contract?
And you said somebody at our room is taking a look at it?
Yes.
Oh, we've, yeah, it's been a month-long process.
Yeah. Good.
She's awesome, Randy. Thank you.
He is.
Questions for the chief? About fire station repairs. This going to be it forever?
God, I hope so. For the rest of my career.
Any other questions for the chief? If not, is there a motion to approve awarding the contract for the fire station building repairs to Dyke House Construction Incorporated in the best interest of the city in the amount of $1,210,588.90?
So moved.
And support. Any comments, questions? Seems like we spent a lot of money tonight, doesn't it?
We're not counting yet.
Motion, support. Okay. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Northhook.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
So you'd think spending $6 million in about seven minutes, you might be done. But we're not.
Man, I already feel guilty.
Yeah, what department is asking?
Mike is still standing at the podium, so that gives you a pretty big hint right there. But we do need to take action. And I think most of the council will remember how difficult it is to obtain fire engines, fire apparatus of all types these days. And so we're following the same procedure we did for our most recent purchase of fire apparatus, and that is to get council authorization up to a maximum amount in advance so that our fire chief and our finance director, at such time as a vehicle can be identified, can immediately issue a purchase order for that based on your approval tonight. So we don't have an actual vehicle and we don't have a actual timeframe, but that's where we're going. Mike, details?
Yeah. As you're aware, we had the truck, the small fire truck totaled out in March of this year. We did very well with the insurance claim for that. We recouped 100% of the current day value for that truck, which was honestly unexpected according to our insurance folks. Then we had another surprise. It seems that the person that bought it from the insurance company for salvage overpaid for it by quite a bit. So we got another, what, $20,000?
$21,000.
Added to that. And we're still waiting for the proceeds of the old aerial truck sale, which is still up for auctions early?
It was due today.
Due today. So those proceeds will be added to this $436,600 and change that we've got toward this purchase. Operationally, it doesn't make sense to buy another small fire truck. Those are custom-built and custom builds right now are taking 18 to 48 months to take delivery on. And we're already down the road of going to three personnel on duty and those are two-person units. So instead, I'm proposing to back up the purchase of the next large fire truck from '25, '26 to '24, '25. Authorizing the purchase order tonight lets us be on the phone on January 2nd when they release that list. You all kind of remember that drill when Tammy and I had to run down the hall. Same kind of thing. There'll be a conference call and when that list drops, it's gotten highly competitive, even more so than it was back then because there's a pending cost increase with some federal emission standards that are changing. So if we wait too long, we're going to miss that and end up paying another $50,000 to $100,000 for the truck. So I guess at that point, I'll stop and take any questions if we have them, but we're looking for a not-to-exceed purchase order at this point in time to let us hit that list as soon as it drops on January 2nd.
So we talked a little bit about this the other day, Mike, but just so I'm understanding it, we're going down, we're going from two trucks down to one truck essentially, right?
Right. I'm going to reduce the size of the fleet by one large truck.
Okay. And this was, the truck that we're moving up was one that was budgeted for next year. Is that a smaller, like a smaller mini?
No. The one we're moving from '25, '26 to '24, '25 was a full-size truck, so that was $833,000.
Okay. Is that similar to the one we got two years ago, then?
Right. Exactly.
Okay. And what was that replacing?
That replaced a 25- or 26-year-old pumper.
Okay. That we've already disposed of?
Yeah.
Okay. Trying to remember.
Actually, that's the one that we converted into the traffic unit.
Okay. That's great. Okay. We got rid of the other one.
So it was a, it was repurposed.
Right. Okay.
Then the old aerial truck is up for auction right now. It sounds like it just closed and I don't want to guess because I've heard numbers as low as $5,000 and as high as 50,000. So we'll see how that shakes out.
So essentially, this kind of is reducing our cost from a budget standpoint to about half of what we expected it to be roughly?
Yes.
Because we're combining insurance proceeds and
Right.
salvage sales and stuff together.
Yep.
So it's probably a pretty good deal. Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief?
Yeah, mine is more of a financial question and that is, so we were joking about how much we've spent in the last few minutes here, but what gives me pause here is we don't necessarily have a plan for how we're going to pay for this one. We just have options. So is there a recommendation?
Well, at this time, I'm hesitant to recommend. We just wrapped our financial audit, so I'm getting a clearer picture of, you know, where we wrapped 2023, which helps us determine where we're going to go. With it in the CIP for '25, '26, moving back, it's money that we won't have to spend in the future. We have to bump that up now. And as always, you know, my options are use your resources, increase revenue if you can, and at the very, very last resort, borrow. I do know the interest rates will be coming down next year some, so depending on where those interest rates end up, it might be prudent to enter into another IPA. I just won't know until we get closer to the acquisition of that particular vehicle. But all three options for our city are very viable. They're, it's just where's your pain point? Do you want to use your fund balance? Do you want to raise revenue? I have done some preliminary calculations. A one-year bump of half a mil would pay for that entire, our portion of what's left for that vehicle. You know, even if you wanted to just bump it for one tax year and then move it right back down to where you are, that's about what it would cost if you were to increase revenue. But those three options are viable and I think that as we get closer, we should be able to take a look at the climate, see what interest rates are doing, and make a decision based on that. I don't know that I answered your question.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
Question, and I've got another kind of related question. So what's the, it's going to be like 18 to, a year and a half to four years?
No, no, no. That's if you order something custom. No, 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 that's if you order something custom. This would be hopefully order it, depending on how we do with that list that comes out, either the first week of January or the first week of February, and then nothing is due until the truck is delivered, and that would be sometime this summer, like after the new fiscal year.
And that was my question, too. Do you need to pay half of an hour?
No, it's 100% on delivery.
Six months at least to get, figure that out.
And this is the way that the last truck was purchased. The authorization came first and the decision on how to pay for it came later because there's such a long gap between when you need to actually have the funds available.
And it's actually the last two vehicles, fire equipment, we bought, we basically handled the same way. Where are we right now? How do we want to do this? So we have an IPA for the pumper and we have an IPA for the aerial, so, and it would be a short one. It would be seven years, you know, so that the truck is paid for for a while before we have to get another one.
I was going to say, I think that is, even though we hadn't formally adopted anything, we kind of went into it knowing that the IPA is what we anticipated doing because in the budget sessions, we had discussed that that was the plan.
Exactly.
And I think I-
It was a larger, much larger purchase, so yeah.
And of these three options, I would just say I, with the caveat of what you explained, that we don't know what it's going to look like in the future, but if rates do come down as anticipated, I think that that approach is the best because we talked about before how, you know, this is a vehicle that serves all in the city, and so we're paying over time by all in the city who are invested in that purchase. So I just personally like the IPA approach. And I also was going to ask, sorry, one follow-up question, and that is, do we have debt that is set to expire soon, bond debt?
So we do have one particular whole name that is set to expire. I think the last principal payment is '25, '26. So, oh, wait, just, nope, November '24, '25, and it's the bond that we floated for this, for the police station. That's the one that's wrapping in '24, '25, yes.
Police and fire.
And also, just so you know, I mean, for our position of debt to equity, we just had our continuing report passed across my desk for review, and where we are right now, we still have the ability to borrow up to $91 million more.
All right, I will say I don't advise that, but I do support the IPA.
Yeah, a little question.
For sure.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Chair, what was the cost of the QRV originally, out of curiosity?
$270,000, I think, right about there. And then the unfortunate thing was, when it was totaled, we were in a, our insurance company lets us adjust present-day values once a year, and that accident occurred in a period of time where fire apparatus prices were increasing by double-digit percentages every quarter. So we lagged a little bit behind on what it was insured for through our company, but the insurance company representing the at-fault driver stepped up and just wrote a check for the difference.
So if we were to buy just a QRV now, it would be probably close to this 440, 455, 5?
Yeah.
So that's actually a pretty good value.
Yes.
When I was anticipating tonight, I was thinking we were not gaining a good amount of return from insurance companies or at-fault parties, but this seemingly is best-case scenario.
You've got about 101% of the current day value of the truck when it was totaled.
Yeah, cool. Thank you.
Good job on that.
Yeah, that's all our insurance people. I would love to take credit for it.
Being persistent about it, you know. Were we able to salvage equipment or tools and stuff off of that old truck?
Yeah, a fair amount. The way it worked, if it came with the truck, it had to go with the truck. But there was a fair amount of equipment that was ours that we had added to it that we were able to salvage.
Is that usable on the new truck, or is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
A lot of it's in the basement right now.
Any other questions for the chief? If not, is there a motion to approve purchase order with halt fire in an amount not to exceed $875,000 for new fire apparatus in the best interest of the city?
So moved.
Support.
Support. Any other comments or questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Nordhook?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas?
Yes.
Thanks very much, and like we did before, we'll keep you posted about how the shopping goes. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Nice way of putting it.
Ken, next item, appointments, various boards and commissions.
Doesn't come with a price tag either, how about that?
Yeah, right. So council, would you like to take those up tonight, or you want to wait until, hopefully everybody's here at the next meeting, which is January 8th? Thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I saw Paul's email today, but that was recommending one person for one of the boards he's on, so I guess I would like to wait for him to weigh in on the rest of those.
Okay.
And maybe the direction of which, where that committee's going in general.
Okay.
So that one alone, I would prefer to wait on.
Lots of, see, a little bit of nodding here. Josh, Justin, thoughts?
I see there's some vacancies on some of these other ones, too. Do we, is 4th of July the only one that we don't, we need to ravel against for?
I think there's some other ones, too, that maybe like don't meet very often, like the construction, let's see, let me take a look at it.
Construction Board of Appeals.
Yeah, Brownfield Redevelopment, the building of, yeah, Construction Board of Appeals and-
It is a low list compared to usual.
Right, right.
Which is, I'm grateful for. Residents are stepping up, but it doesn't make sense to wait for one, to wait for them all?
Yeah, maybe it gives us, gives all of us another couple weeks to recruit as well. That's just my thought.
I mean, these other ones don't meet until-
Right after.
Has needed, almost, some of them?
Some don't, don't, won't meet until needed, but none of them require appointments now will meet before your January meeting.
That is just my question.
So, yeah, so you'd prefer to wait until?
Yeah.
Thoughts?
Good with that?
Yeah. Justin, thoughts?
Yeah, I just, I thought for some of the ones that we're not waiting on, recommendations, could we just move forward with the recommendations that are on there, just-
Certainly.
So the people on, you know, the boards that I serve with, for example, Historical and Library, the boards have made the recommendations, so just accept them.
Okay. We can do that.
Great.
All right, so we'll start and go through the ones where recommendations. Let's start with Board of Review. The recommendation is Malcolm Burns to be reappointed. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. Do we usually do this with a roll call? We don't have to, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Opposition, please say no. Board of Zoning, we've got a, we've got some openings on there that we might need to recruit for as well. Same with Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, which-
When was the last time they met? One time?
Yeah, but you never know. I mean, maybe that would be good if we need that again. Let's see, the Building Authority, is that the same group?
The Building Authority are really based on-
That looks like an old one because the recommendation-
It's all jump up from top to bottom.
Okay, so the Building Authority, the two people are the Finance Director and City Manager.
Right.
So there's no action to be taken really on that, if whoever is in that position. Okay. So the Building, Business Relations Committee, they've made a recommendation to reappoint Scott Pastor. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Motion? Any of your support at the same time? Okay, motion of support? Discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
The opposition, please say no. Construction Board of Appeals, we also have a vacancy on that, so anybody wants to do some recruiting, that would be great. Downtown Development Authority, the regular terms of Scott Johnson and Darwin Sturken are both expiring, are expiring in both, would like to be reappointed, and the DDA has recommended And then there was another appointment that we, for Harold Schilling. I think our DDA requires a resident of the DDA. No, I think there was, because of the number of people that are living in-
The threshold.
So Harold would be the resident. He lives, I think, on White.
White Street.
White Street, he and his wife. So is there a motion to reappoint Scott Johnson and Darwin Sturken, and also Harold Schilling to a partial term expiring at the end of 2026 to the DDA?
So moved.
Motion.
And support. Any discussion? All those in favor of those appointments and reappointments, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Okay, Election Commission. You're going to be actually probably pretty busy this year, right, Marcy?
We will be.
Ann Fenske and Christine Houston are on there, and they've, are both willing to be reappointed. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Environmental Sustainability Committee. Chair, you want to tell us about this?
Well, yeah, the two, well, technically, terms expiring next year. One is already one of our board members that has a role. She's the secretary. Catherine Phelps, great. Martha Vermeulen, who everybody knows in this room, is replacing Jane, who moved who-knows-where, but she moved away from Granville. She's a no-brainer. And then Seth, we interviewed him, and he came in, he's been with us not for two meetings, great young individual from our community, and I think all three will be great assets.
Okay. Oh, so you interviewed him?
We did.
Great, okay. All right, so those are recommendations from the Environmental Sustainability Committee to appoint Catherine Phelps and Martha Vermeulen, and also Seth. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Support.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
The opposition, please say no. Historical Commission. Let's see, this happens, does this happen every year? I mean, everybody gets reappointed?
They vote, they vote their board members internally.
Okay, so you've got a list there. Anything, Justin, you want to add on Historical?
No, everyone that's serving is doing a wonderful job, and this was by vote, and no one expressed concerns with the integrity of the election or anything, so I think we accept the recommendations.
Okay, great. So is there a motion to appoint the people listed, again, to, for another year term, to the Historical Commission?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
The opposition, please say no. And then Library Board. The recommendation from the Board is that we reappoint both Laura and Sarah and Jan Schilling. Both are on there and are willing to serve again. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Motion and support? Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
The opposition, please say no. Let's see, Local Officers Compensation Commission, they don't meet next year. Do we still want to do anything on that, or?
I think it's still good to have that up to date, even though they won't meet till the odd number of years.
Okay. The regular term of Scott Pastor is expiring, and he is, would like to be reappointed. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion support? Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. All right. Park and Recreation Board. Ken, you want to, well, let's see. Four regular-term members are expiring. Kate Batchelder, Tim Buck, Amy Gardine, and Brent Talan all would like to be reappointed. Do we technically do even the school ones?
We only do the city ones. In this case, there's a single one with Tim Buck.
Okay.
The school will have to decide.
Right, yeah. Okay. So is there a motion to reappoint Tim Buck as a city of Granville member to the Park and Recreation Board?
So moved.
Support.
Motion support? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposition, please say no. And the last item tonight is the Tree Board. Seven members. The DPW Director is appointed for a one-year term, as is the City Council representative, and that's already happened. So the recommendation from the Tree Board is that Kyle Boss be reappointed for the regular term expiring 12/31/26, and Carrie, how do you say Carrie's last name? Reese, right?
Reese, I believe.
Okay.
Reese.
Reese, for the partial term expiring at the end of next year, 12/31/24, and also that Mike Sullivan be appointed to a partial term expiring at the end of 2025, December 31 of 2025. Kyle, anything you'd like to mention about how the board decided that?
It's really good that our board will be full again, and the guys that came on are really great guys and have been really good about volunteering, so I'm very pleased.
Okay, great. So is there a motion to approve the three members to the Tree Board as per the recommendation of that Tree Board?
So moved.
Support.
And support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
The opposition, please say no. Okay, and then a couple of them will take up again in a couple weeks, so see if we can do some recruiting. Construction Board of Appeals, Brownfield Redevelopment, Building Authority, Board of Zoning Appeals, and also the 4th of July celebration. Some more recruitment needed in those areas. Ken, anything else?
Two items for the council tonight. One, I just wanted to flag the information, the proposals were received on Friday from five firms interested in offering their services to the council for the city manager search, and because they weren't due till 5:00 on Friday, they weren't included in your packet. They were emailed to your city email today, so you should have a complete copy of all of those. There's also included in there a summary sheet that might make it easier. There's a variety of links to the proposals, like the longest one's 59 pages. So if that helps you, kind of, Emily in our HR department kind of went through and put that together for us. If you prefer a hard copy, let me know. We'll get you hard copies of those. Sometimes people prefer to read online and others don't, so you can let me know if you require that, but at this point, you don't have hard copies. It would be my intention to put that on the agenda for January 8th, to make a decision about moving forward on that, and you'll see the proposals, the timeframes, they're relatively consistent with what you experienced last year. The second thing I wanted to bring you up to speed on is just to let you know that two interviews were held today for potential candidates for the 4th of July coordinator position, and when I left, there was one more that responded today that was attempting to be scheduled. It may be scheduled now, I think Wednesday, maybe?
Wednesday.
Okay. So at least, we didn't know what we were going to get, but we've got actually three people that were worthy of interviews, so we'll keep that moving quickly because we already know we're behind on that and try to expedite it as fast as we can, depending on the people that were personally ultimately selected, so just a couple updates there.
Great. Thank you, Ken. That summary that Emily had put together was really interesting. It was nice and quick. I looked at the MML, what was the cost and who are they proposing, and so, I mean, it was really easy to just quickly take a look at that.
It's all on one page, and, you know, that doesn't mean that you may not want to go into the detail, but it's easier to sort out quickly.
Yeah, that was helpful. The difference is- Hey, councilmember comments. Chair, you're all by yourself on that end of the-
Got all the space down here. You know, it is the last meeting of the year, and, you know, normally, you know, you thank people around Thanksgiving time, but there's so many people in this room that we could thank, the police, fire, parks, DPW, finance, clean water plant, all of our residents, all the people who serve on different boards, but it's just a great time of year to just kind of reflect on that, and so I just wish everybody here Merry Christmas, thank you for all your service to us, whether personally or professionally. It does not go unnoticed, so thank you very much.
Justin?
Yeah, I would echo all of that. I also thank you for, I know it's kind of tedious to go through each of those, but now, at least for me, it'll be easier to zoom in on the ones that are, you know, some discussion and research and recruitment for those other appointments, so I appreciate that. Last meeting, we had discussed, there were concerns from some residents regarding parking at the, some of our DDA events, and we were brainstorming some ideas, and I know another idea that was proposed was some limitations on residential parking, and so just want to throw that out there for further discussion and see, you know, what all we can and are willing to do as far as enforcing parking. And then I will just wish everyone-
And then I will just wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh?
Yeah, same. Thanks to everybody for, you know, serving and for being part of the community and for all the work that goes into making things run smoothly around here. Appreciate it. Also Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Also wanted to say welcome to Oakstown Brewing. They opened this past weekend finally downtown and had their grand opening, so look forward to them being a, a good, you know, neighbor in our downtown and assume that they'll get involved with downtown events and be part of the social district in the future and all those things too. So it's great to have that building filled and back up and running kind of in the, in the middle of downtown, so welcome to them. And just look forward to, you know, serving with all of you in the next year and I hope everybody has good holidays and that's it.
Randy?
I also just want to say thank you to everybody for all your hard work and committee people and chairs and there's a tremendous amount of work that gets done behind the scenes that I think even often we're not even aware of. And it just, things flow so well, so thank you, everybody, and just want to wish you Merry Christmas, Happy New Year also.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, everybody. I echo the other comments. It's a pleasure to be on this council and work with all of you and department heads and everybody in the city of Granville. It's, it's a pleasure. Also, Oakstown, it was great to go to the open, open ribbon cutting. And Teresa, thank you so much for your efforts in recruiting them and I don't know what all you did, but I know you had a big role to play in that. So not only do you know how to throw great parties downtown, but bringing business in, it's huge. Thank you. I think that's it. Yeah.
Just, yeah, one other quick thing I was going to mention. I didn't turn this way to see the chiefs over here, but I had a chance to meet up with the chiefs for a little bit earlier this week or last week about the Toy Express and I know that Chief Anglom in particular kind of spearheads that effort with the First Responders Children's Foundation, bringing toys to Helmand Children's Hospital. So I worked down there and got a chance to stop by and say hi to the, both the chiefs were there along with a number of other first responders from the area. Kind of do a parade of all of their apparatuses and vehicles and deliver the toys to the children's hospital for the kids, so just want to say thanks to the chiefs for doing that and for everybody that was involved. It's a nice thing to do for the community and for the kids at the children's hospitals,